All right, so let's call the July 17th, 2019, BoVie City Council Meeting to order at 6:05 PM. Um, we'll call Boyovich, Ekemovich here, Johnson, Meyer Nail.
Here.
I'm here and Dimic is here. Um, we have an approval for the agenda.
What do you want to ask?
Um, we got a motion by... Mr. Boyovich, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second. Is there any conditions or corrections in the additional comments here with it? I have some additions. Um, under Guest Number 3, Beautiful BoVie, and under Council Members, uh, handicap accessibility for council meetings. We'll discuss that a little further. Um, is there any other corrections, additions, or deletions?
Um, I'd like to add, uh, under the planning, we have a building meant to be purged. I see the planning when you referenced that, and then I would like to talk about Blake again, and I don't know whether that should be under council members or...
Under police?
He's not here to talk about that.
Under council members, then, would it be Blake?
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Yes, Greenway Area Community Fund. Mr. Bob Moss.
Well, I forgot to give him those copies.
Uh, thank you for the time. I can say I do, I'm one of the members of the Greenway Area Community Fund, and I wear my t-shirt with pride. I think all Greenway t-shirts. But, uh, this organization, I think everyone will wear it, or they have any questions on the thought of the Greenway Area Community Fund. I kind of made a presentation a year or so ago. I'm a BoVie rep as well as Renee Johnson, and what we're trying to do is raise monies, and, uh, Blenden has a, has a matching grant. For every dollar that we receive up to $200,000, they will match. So if a dollar is given, it becomes a $2 dollar. And after the $200,000, then, which would give us a total of $400, they will no longer match that. It would be just, you know, it would be continuing fundraisers through the years. But our main fundraiser has been the Oktoberfest. They held it last, uh, October, first week in October over in Harville at the City Hall. It was very successful. Uh, from what I understand, they wanted to repeat it again, and that's what they're doing. And, uh, part of the last meeting, we agreed to ask each and every city in our Greenway area for a donation that helps sponsor the Oktoberfest. There would be advertising issues and costs, and, uh, I guess that's kind of where it's at. This money will not go toward the matching fund. This would be used for, for whatever it takes to, to make the Oktoberfest cool. Any question on that?
Can I ask how much, do you, do you know how much money they refunded me last year?
Well, you know, there was a figure of about $16,000 that came out. Now, I don't, that was how much came in the door, how much the operating costs were. They were taking care of, like, Blenden, uh, at that time, so I, I don't know if they could answer. But yeah, there is a lot of money coming through the door. And I, like, on, on this particular request I am asking, there was a Calumet gave $150 just the other night. They're sitting on it. Anything is better than nothing, and if you choose not to, that's fine too, but I just wanted to make a presentation.
Should I be able to?
I agree with 350.
I'll make a motion, we donate $150.
Motion by Mr. Boyovich, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ekemovich, any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and I will, when it's completed, I will sort of announce how much we program.
Do you have a date?
It will be the first week, the first Saturday of Oktoberfest, I think it's the fifth.
All right.
Yeah. And we're going to be closer, go on, it's early.
One more question for you.
Yes.
Is there a deadline when Blenden cuts off their giving part of it, like, when?
Yes, as far as I understand, December 31st of this year, 2019, they're, they're offering this until that time. Whether there's going to be an extension or not, I won't know. But hopefully we can make it work to about $153,000 right now. So we have to go, you know, number 47, and that'll, we're just, and you can keep our fingers crossed, and, and this will be a fundraiser that will make some money for us, but most of them are relying on donations from residents of awful generous people. Again, getting the word out to those that may in fact want to contribute is should be difficult. But there is a representative from every Greenway community, starting over Nashua Township, that runs all the way through, you know, Calumet, Harville, Tappan, and BoVie, Coring in the Prairie. And there's a representative, when we do do our giving, or it's gonna start possibly at the end of this year, and, uh, we're hoping that, that we'll be able to come up with a kind of a good way amongst all the groups, specifically for Greenway projects. Some of them eventually will end up BoVie issues, some will probably be Coring, and again, there shouldn't be any favoritism. It should be, well, uh, there's a good group of people I'm very comfortable with. And part of where I got involved, although I'm not the representative for BoVie, or for BFILOS, we, we had a group there that, as all familiar with that, that we gave to youth recreation projects for many years, and we decided that, you know, when we ended our, our time, which was last year, we gave $118,000, which we had left on the books to this organization, so, and that translated to the first $236,000. Again, it's all like a lot of money, but it's also, what they plan on doing is, we'll have, whatever we keep in the, in the books, it will be, uh, they're gonna have, I guess I should sort of explain it, but the Community Fund, the Grand Mark, as you've probably heard about the foundation, they are the ones who are collecting the monies from the Greenway Area Community Fund, the Big Fork, Nashua. They pool all their monies to them, and then they have a board that, uh, invests on it. And they're kind of thinking that we're gonna average anywhere between 4.2 to 4.7. That's their, their thinking across the board. So, and we get that $400,000, or whatever we get, we'll be donating that 4.2 into the, whatever needs the money. Does that make sense?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Lawrence Olberg, Edridge. He's not here. Moving on to Beautiful BoVie.
Okay, I've got a couple things. Uh, we are having our first flea market, it's going to be August 9th to 10th. You're quite glad I'm here, and that'll be from 8:00 to 5:00, Friday, Saturday. Uh, 6:00 AM, we're gonna set up Friday morning, and, uh, yeah, we'll see how it goes. If it's good, it's good. If it's not, then we'll, we'll do it, so. Uh, and the other thing that we got is, we did get approved, uh, we talked a little bit at the, uh, last office here, about the Better Foundation, who's doing a, uh, current communities, uh, leadership tech field, and so we did get approved for that. Us and... So, yeah, so there'll be some things for that, um, July 25th, it's gonna be at the Core Group, so if anybody wants to join that. Um, that was, we'll have it here at 6:00 to 5:00, and then August 13th at 6:00 to 5:00, so, so. That's all I got.
Sure, well, thank you. All right, public forum, anybody in the public wanna address the council? Okay, moving on to consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the June 19th, 2019 council meeting, and the disbursements for claims and payroll? Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Boyovich, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to Department of Heads and Committees, Police Chief William Holm is not here, no one's over the police, but, uh, we do have the report, the police report.
I see issues, we're getting a lot of calls to the annexed area of Coring.
Yes, they are.
Do you know, or does Bill send home any reports to Coring also?
Well, I think Coring wants a report for their council as well. That should have that on there, I don't know what their reports.
Well, I was kind of curious to see Coring's report of how many calls they have, maybe on their ships. How long that's...
That can be run.
Well, I would kind of like, if at all possible.
We can go over here and talk about the last.
Because technically, we're getting reports from our, our ships only.
Right. And then further? All right, we're going on to engineer. Engineer Kevin?
No, I'm not engineer.
You don't have a minute. Public works, pass your part.
Let me do it. I see the fan, boy.
Yeah, I do.
Some people are spoiled.
Some people have fans that disappear.
Deer stand are important.
Do you have a very heated deer stand?
I do, uh, and I need the fan to, to circulate that heat. I call them here. Okay, I'm getting glasses, we have this whole band thing here, so.
Didn't take the glasses, but I'm just...
Uh, any questions on the report before I go do it? You're looking at me.
No, I didn't. The things are closer than the empirical glasses, are they?
It's, it's touch, it's, it's harder.
It's an adjustment, kind of like fans.
Uh, let's move down under streets then to, well, that's the number seven. Public facilities have done two members. Uh, Adam can't make it with his work schedule, and so we have an opening there.
And CBT.
And CBT. Uh, we also, uh, Mr. Bush's position was never released either. So, basically, we're down to two. Uh, we go quarterly meetings, but we, there's not much business that we do. I basically have these reports that have water soard on, and, you know, it's...
Are you able to adjust the time on the PUC one?
Just for you?
I mean, if we did it at 5:00, I could.
Well, we still got the CBT issue.
Well, what?
Well, I don't need a job.
Well, I was gonna say, if, yeah, if somebody was able to do the CBT one, I could make the PUC one fit that. Unless you want the same person on the vote.
That's the way it's set up in, in fire laws. Like, the CBT is the street commissioner, uh, I think one member of PUC and that works.
Oh, all right.
Kevin, couldn't we not, as a council, fulfill that? Because you're basically talking about information about raising rates or not raising rates.
Right, I mean, anything we do is just a recommendation, basically. So, I mean, it's up to you, and, you know, I think it would be resolved. We haven't met since January, and we said...
That's the BoVie piece.
BoVie, yes. I mean, it's a thought, you can definitely deal with it if you want to think about it.
Can we put it on the next, uh, agenda and discuss whether or not we should kind of think about it?
We've had, we've had, I've had on the, the channel to the website, you know.
We put it in the paper.
We haven't had anybody apply.
And that's one, either one, without PUC?
PUC's quarter.
Quarter.
And CBT is month. But we do have the fellow CBTs.
Right.
PUC has no power, I'll be honest. Not above.
It's just a committee.
Nothing.
Well, I mean, I just think about it, because council meeting, decide.
Maybe some are meetings are cameras.
We can do that right here, or we can have it agreed, schedule it out every third month.
I mean, you did it already, PUC's status before.
Right.
What they're doing.
So.
Then the most recommendations come from the, the union.
Right. So, just put it on the next council agenda, and we'll look at...
Okay, so, you still need to fill CBT.
And that's monthly.
And that's, and that's, so that's a good council.
I volunteer to do that.
Devin's right.
That was gonna be my...
Yeah, I figured this was payback to it.
That is the second Wednesday at 4:00, Coring's a lot.
Okay, so the second Wednesday, the third Coring's at 5:00.
We're usually done by 4:30, 4:45.
Okay.
Well, thanks, Kevin.
So can somebody motion to... Yeah, someone had to just add.
Well, I'll make a motion, okay, Ekemovich. Ekemovich off that panel. Put in, yes, CBT, yeah, you got it.
How do you see that, Steve?
Ekemovich. So, all right, motion is second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Or anything else on that?
Okay, moving on to number 12, Michael John Mattman. Uh, he should sit instead of came up, as we've always identified your capital improvement plan. Uh, basically, we revised it, added some areas of town that have been identified as areas that need work. Uh, submitted for a CDF grant, which is at the budget system through the state management budget office. We're asking them for $600,000, then ask, uh, I triple R B for $250,000, and we have to match the $250,000.
Motion.
We will have. We can do it. Uh, this will not, this will be for next year's state budget, so this will be a project until late next year, the previous. So if this gets up to speed primarily on, on the ends of the roads, but the most part of it is about possibly about halfway through the five-year plan. And that's just an informational item. Moving on to number 17, under streets, uh, on the back to pork, there is a, I had, uh, this gentleman come up, he does rapids, uh, other communities, Coring. A guy I've been using for practicing, he hasn't shown up for three years straight. So I'm done, you know, I'm a local guy, I'm a wooden business, but I'm done, so. And Jerry from Bargain around the whole town, and, hold your breath, I mean, you probably already see the number. Uh, no way we can do the whole thing this year. What I would like to do is, I have budgeted for practicing every year.
Mm-hmm.
So basically, the last three years, we've gotten nothing, so I would like to use both budget amounts, and, and this year also.
We still have the money, hey?
The whole budget just worked, so, you know.
Someone does that bring us up?
Uh, 16. So if we're off the years, that, if I get 15, 16, and some of, some of the items on his list are items that are on the capital budget system grant. So those would be crossed off, so the $45,000 would come down. I, I have to subtract all project areas. So I'm thinking if we can get $15,000, $16,000 of it done this year, then next year, if we can hit another large chunk, then we're done with it. And then it's just, uh, repetitive maintenance each year, keep our streets up.
Are we on a 10-year cycle, Kevin, that, with 10 years, all the streets should have been touched up?
Well, that would be that. But practicing doesn't last any years.
No, I mean, you're moving around the town.
But the one thing with this guy is, he rolls the cracks and fills them instead of just pumps them. You know, old homes, it's a much better process. Hence the cost, so.
Is this private or private? Or that's just, you know, he put it in.
I would put it as a private. Well, if we've already budgeted the money and it's there, it's, we've got that lot of budgeting for.
Do we need to make a motion on that, or is that to sell it?
Yeah. More money than anything.
Well, the, after killing the strikes, the red bull did that to buy next year stuff, that he takes care of this with the contract.
Okay, is there a second?
Are we, so are we just openly saying whatever it comes to, that's not a, or are we having a dollar on?
Within our budget that we have.
All second. Johnson, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, nothing on board? Well, well, the water cover, or I got that on the website, that will be drained next week. I'll do an inspection, we're gonna have Coring water for probably a week. I don't know if I can get the power back online Friday, it's got to be coordinated after inspection. It's got to pass two by three tests, which takes us into Friday, so.
Ready to start.
Prepare for Coring.
How often do you have to leave that, Kevin?
That is every, two wet inspections, one dry, three, nine years. Dry, there's two wet inspections every three years, and so three, three, and then dry in nine years. Okay, and then other, uh, it's not under steward, because it just happened last week. Uh, had the annual maintenance done at Trail View Station. Uh, both the pedals are bad on the pump. On the pumps, there's two pumps, uh, they normally pump 120 or 130 gallons per minute. Pumping is only 70 gallons per minute. Uh, pedals are chipped from rocks and, uh, so I hope, there's $15,000 to replace both of them. I told them to order a schedule, we have to do it, we have money to work on, so, but I still need a motion if it's $15,000.
Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Meyer Nail, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then on August 28th, the city crew has to go and get cart for this fur issue. Uh, unfortunately, that's our busiest week of the year, but they already set up. Uh, I'm gonna actually call this, the county attorney and see if they can change it, but I'm sure they won't through BoVie City, plumber days operation, but, uh, in our contract, it states that we are paid our wages if we go to jury duty, and I turn over the $28 hours of day that we get paid from the county to the city. It doesn't state anything about being witnesses in a court case. So.
Are they asking to be there for the day?
They said, so, and I don't know what's gonna happen.
Can you do some of the planned things for that Thursday or Friday?
Uh, we're gonna have to deal with it somehow.
Right, right.
And I will talk to county attorney about how long we have to be there, it's gonna be a different time, so it's something to be careful. But what I'm being added is, I have a motion that we are paid our wage, and then we'll turn the funding over to the city for this, because this isn't due, so this isn't covered by a contract.
I'd like, we have a legal weigh-in on John, you ran against him before, is that, is that, is that the same thing as a subpoena, or?
It, it's, it's, yes, I would treat it as the same, basically, they asked, in the criminal case by the county, uh, you're being ordered to appear under their direction, so I think you should handle it like you would if somebody was...
I'm gonna make a motion that the street department is paid, but also do check with the timing to get rid of this.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ekemovich, any further discussion?
Who, who has been, who needs to be there, because every...
All three of us, Ryan, Justin, and so.
That's subpoenaed by quarter.
And your part timers are not?
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then the last thing I have is, I'd like to discuss, uh, part-time worker, Hudson Williams. Uh, I only call somebody that is a very good worker. Uh, he also has a CBL, he's been driving garbage truck, uh, running the equipment. I would like to see him do a raise.
What's he at now?
He's at 11.
What do you want, or is he?
In, well, that's a few things. I just want, I'd like to see him do a raise. He has, in the past, since I've worked in this as an actor, when I worked for the city, and had a CBL, and you drove equipment in your truck, you got 15. Not a lot. That never, why that didn't keep going when I started, I don't know. You know, who was here then? But anyway, I think, I think somebody with a CBL that's operating with a truck, it's gonna be a little harder for me to, they have to track this all, but I think we've done. But I, I don't think $11 an hour is good. He's a great worker.
Is there a motion? Uh, I heard you saying $15 an hour. We paid other part-time employees $15 an hour tonight.
Yeah, what does he average per week for all?
He's, see, he's taking off, he'll do garbage, and then after the dump garbage, he'll take off, because he's, he's got side jobs.
Right.
But he, at times, he averages three full days a week, but he doesn't want any more than that.
Right.
And it's also, I'll make a motion up to arrest the $15 an hour part-time worker. Part-time, I'm good with that. Just, I'll be, I'll, I'll take that.
And I'll second.
Boyovich, first by Johnson. Um, there's no, do you need an issue, nothing involved with this?
No, it's, 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 it's...
Any further discussion?
He's a good worker.
And did you, did you say, um, that you would have to track his hours separately?
Well, okay, if it was just when he's going on a CBL, I would, I would like to see this $15.
Okay, that's not what we're proposing, but we're proposing straight across the board.
Okay, yeah. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Back to, uh, next paper, or this paper?
This.
This paper?
Beautiful.
Okay, any further discussion now about part of the day? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, and then I just want to, so we've got all the building laying in the, in the front library, and that was at a cost of $500. Uh, I think it looks really good, it's better in there.
Nice and bright, same color.
Could do this room for $15, $375.
Do we have money in the budget for building again?
Well, I budgeted, I budgeted $25,000 this year for building repairs, and it doesn't look like that company that did the steps last year. I've gotten zero return calls from them, because they wouldn't do the steps, so.
You really don't want to do it, right?
They didn't fold, because I talked to the secretary, but the boss isn't even here.
Well, can we get a price on doing the ones in here and doing the hallway in there? Because these are the ones you use the most, and it'll save us energy.
You got a hallway, it's, 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 I mean, it's sort of, I'm using more, right?
And, just, uh, two for five. Anybody put ceiling fans in here?
There's a way.
There's a little, the money, there's a way.
On your thing, Henry.
How about central air?
Well, you can get it there, because we should look up. Air conditioner that goes outside, two of them are tachy, are here on the wall, and one for the library.
Well, one thing too I wanna bring up is, we went up on the, not to get rid of that, but we went up on the roof, to check out the roof vents and where it hurts, and one of them was badly replaced, but they notice, for you that don't know, the cypress out there. And it is a large three-phase, it would say it probably weighs a ton and a half. Uh, the base of it is wood.
And it's live?
And the wood is, it's, that's gonna be an issue that we're gonna have to address. I don't, like I say, I don't know what that is. Uh, I did look it up on the internet, I actually looked it up, but I didn't almost, I didn't even see a weight.
It's, that's not operational correct, that's just really old.
It's actually, I've been looking everywhere in the time, because the timer's set, the old flare all, the wearing, with all that, took the timer out, and I got the parts, and did it installed. Because we should have a cypress room, I don't know if we want to renew at nine o'clock every night.
Oh, that's historic, right?
But, well, I mean, it's a timer, I can, but we at least, we at least need it for civil defense.
But it's not connected with the sheriff's office, or?
No, but I, I was gonna ask you to call Harlan and see what it would take to do that.
Yeah, you really should, because.
In another lease of some kind, he's slid, I'm gonna do that.
I'm hoping people made a, made a new brick, emergency bricks or something, you know, to take your lot.
Well, and is it actually the, uh?
I didn't think so, I think it's just setting them.
Uh, with the meat. It's nice.
With that, that's all I have.
Okay, so you're gonna look into the air conditioning things, but? You want, you want air conditioner, the tachy?
What? I missed that, I guess I had some.
Well, you should, if, if your money that was budgeted for the building, if there's money left over, it'd be nice if you could look into what it costs to put, it's called a.
Split, yeah.
Split, you know?
Many split.
Split, you know?
Many split, yeah.
So you have an outdoor compressor that, and the lines come in at the air conditioner, one for here and?
One and a half, and a tall.
Yeah, something, we've been dealing with this every year, it's terrible.
Okay, just gotta figure out where the origin, who's using it.
Yeah, just two for five. Any else we got?
Question, number six underwater, did we talk about that, or didn't? Did we ever talk about that, huh?
Water, yes.
Okay.
They told you to be, we're not pouring any water, or?
Yeah, but you said you needed an okay, that you would like permission.
No, we're in contract for that.
Oh.
The, the list station, the, the umbrellas, the list station talks to me. Number six underwater, we have a payment contract with that.
So you don't need okay, and you need that?
But you said I'd like permission to give them an okay.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Okay, so if they're, under the contract, you know, it's just inspections, so if there are necessary repairs that need to be done, I would like the okay to do that instead of. Coming back to the cool drain, the water tower again, one pouring water again, I don't, I, I just expect it's gonna be blocking, I don't think there's gonna be, you know, maybe.
Is there a motion?
No, thanks for that.
Michael Meyer Dale, is there a second?
What's up?
Second by Johnson, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries.
Okay, one more.
Okay.
Just, if you do the bricks, if that ever comes up with a brickwork whatsoever, I'm just noticing that the.
On the real?
It is getting so bad, I mean, big, big bricks are falling out.
That was on my radar.
Okay, okay.
Any else? Birdie, birdie? Yeah. Right, moving on, uh, birdie, birdie, needing minutes.
Oh.
You have anything?
I believe there is.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm trying to say we, uh, we'll be waiting for, um, our questions for calling numbers. I did talk to a former clerk also, she ran a cemetery, and she did go over her children where everything is, so it's a matter of, um, providing us with information.
Okay.
Today.
But it looks, the way it looks, it could be good for us. We'll just leave it at that till we get the official numbers.
Okay. All right, moving on to planning and zoning, building permit.
Yeah, we, at our last meeting, we did move variants for Stacy Bill's fence. And we turned back a building permit for the lodge, yeah, because they didn't have that information requirement. Uh, did you say you sent the mother building permit, did you get, did you get the information?
I did, I got all the information, some of it I had to get my own off of the, the G I S site, um, but it is, everything is, uh, well within our ordinances, and so, it's all good. I, I just, we determined by, um, it didn't look like there was a lot of open space, and so we were wondering about the, uh, amount of empty space in the, in the lodge, and it reached that requirement.
Okay, that was another one, where they, um, put in the building permit when the project was but half or more done, so, whatever, it's still down there to be worked on.
Great. But you don't see the need to actually stop and just, you got the numbers in there to get with it?
So I actually did, it looks like he stopped on it already, and I haven't seen him turn, turn a screw down there and a weed now, so.
So, what's recommendation to approve it?
Well, yeah, we might as well ask the council to approve it now, so.
Is there a motion to approve it?
I have a motion to approve it.
And who's that for?
Um, this is for Michael Ratake, I think you say it.
Right, right, I'm here to go and make a call.
It was the one that, the slab was already approved by the council, um, and he had said that he was gonna do the garage for another year, um, but he promised money, and he wanted to do it, so, um.
It, it looks nice, it looks, it's.
How can you say he promised money?
Yeah.
Awesome.
Good for him.
Okay, a motion and a second, any further discussion?
I just wanna, I just wanna make one comment, that I think that we're trying to, on the planning and zoning community, we're trying to, uh, hold to the ordinances a little more, and make sure that these are filled out properly, and that they actually do, are, you know, have the right known space and things like that. And that we're gonna continue to turn them, I'm okay saying that, like, that we're going to turn them back over when they're not, when they're not completed. I mean, if they're, if they don't have enough information, we're going to ask for the information, instead of just blindly approving them.
That's assuming the job isn't done by this time they turn their building permit. True. Which brings up another question I have.
What kind of, let's go on this, you're ready to motion, a second, so any further discussion about that building permit? All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries, back to you.
Uh, what's going on, does anybody have, what's going on with the old bottle shop building up here?
That could just.
I noticed they're deconstructing quite a bit of that.
It's a connotation work, it looks like.
And that wall, the front, the wall on the street side was hanging in, I believe the other.
Well, I understand that, the whole wall should have been torn down, but they need the permit for that, and they don't have one.
Well, he called me and said they were siding it, and I said, no, you don't need a permit for siding.
No, but that's not what I thought.
Yeah, and the rocks are gone, and all those wood beams in there.
Well, that's all I knew, so he was gonna sign, that's all I was saying.
They dug up right a bit underneath that building, and they knocked that whole wall, or half of that wall out, that I can see.
They're definitely, they're definitely improving what was there, so maybe just.
But the challenge with they are really is they are changing the infrastructure, so they do need it coming.
So can you either hold them, just, yeah, and pull up a permit, get it to us, please, thank you? Then at least we know what they're doing.
Okay, uh, uh, in our discussions, one of the main things that we are kind of playing on is high-speed internet. Is the council doing anything to acquire high-speed internet in our?
Yeah, I called Paul Bunyan, and they're not interested in, in, I mean, it's not worth the money to them, I have a call in the media town, I have.
I understand, that's the, been the main thing for years, feeling like anyone can say, well, if you can guarantee us X many hundred customers who come in, they're gonna hook you right up.
If I'm not mistaken.
They want an immediate return on their money on their investment, is what they're saying.
One of those companies put a service in for the middle school.
Which media com did it?
No, Paul Bunyan.
Was it Paul Bunyan?
They get put money in for the middle.
There's lines that run through here for them. But they got too much money from the state for grants, that's why they're going rural, so they're not, not so much.
So they're not lucky so much with the smaller homes and whatever, but it is possible if they wanted to pay with the time, and I'm sure that the majority of residents in town would be interested.
Well, they absolutely would be, but when I talked to them several years ago, it was, the infrastructure to break it off to each house was more money than they had recouped at that time, so they weren't interested.
You could, you could trade media com, I mean, I, media com's great for libraries.
I've called them, I have it in their bag.
That's what I was gonna ask, who's got the contract that they got high-speed internet here?
Uh, uh.
It could be available in town, but.
Well, I understand the contract we have is not exclusive anymore.
No, and we got nothing.
No, I understand, so somebody else could come in.
So, can I make a comment, because we had brought this up at planning and zoning, and I had a conversation with Dr. Pett, um, about this, because he was concerned about it. And, um, I was, we were asking what was the definition of high speed, um, and he looked it up, and high speed is greater than a hundred megabits per second, and right now, S C I is offering two hundred megabits per second.
But they may offer that, they, they can offer that, but you may not get that speed at your house.
Right.
Because I have S C I, and I do not get that speed at my house.
You might not have.
And I have century one, and I don't give the speed that they give in the whole rate, so I, I got all different.
So I think they also can offer that, but you.
This is, sir, Kevin?
They, they don't guarantee you the speed, they say maybe up to. I act, I have sixty megabyte through S C I, and most of the time I get sixty, and it's very fast, I stream at least.
I, I was gonna say, I have S C I, and for me, it seems, uh, I don't, I don't, I mean, I have router issues every once in a while, it seems to crash, maybe once a week, but I, I know you have that same issue.
You have to reset it all the time, yeah.
I just think some competition is healthy.
Higher too.
For some of these places, because they can do whatever they want essentially with rates if they have competition, so.
I agree, can you get media com to come in here, are you good then?
I don't think Paul Bunyan will, because of my graphics in the house, I have equipment, that's what I'm told, so.
Somebody checked on Paul Bunyan.
I did, a year ago.
I guess Paul Bunyan said they have no interest in coming in here, so you're talking about money, um, I believe, uh, this last, well, I, I believe it's federal or state money, but there is money of small C, of internet, uh.
I guess I haven't heard that.
Uh, the last run, all politicians were talking about getting high speed to rural America, so rural Minnesota, so.
I'm thinking.
Rural as you can get. So, it's something we should pursue, for one major reason, is, is a draw for people that want to work at home.
Yeah, I know that when, uh, Enstrut Studios was here, one of the biggest problems, uh, getting high-speed internet, that seemed to their needs with all the pain and the huge dollars that they were, exclusively out there on, if I remember correctly, then, you're right, so, for businesses and other stuff, faster the better, you know, but. Let's see, what else finds out, so.
Uh, it's a little bit of a blast, not mine, as always, but, uh, mine planning board.
Okay.
Now, the mine planning board has submitted a resolution to the governor, I believe, and the head of the E N R also, uh, in support of. More local participation in decisions on mining things, by having cities, I know Mashaw, Marlborough, so on, have already submitted their own resolution in that regard, uh, who likely, we'll be getting involved in that.
Have they got a resolution available for us to, have they got a resolution available for us to pass?
I didn't have the, we have the copy that we sent, but I can get it up here tomorrow.
You can get it up for the clerk, and we can put it in our next post-it bag to go to the.
Uh, the other major thing that's going on is, uh, Tom Anzal, I'm sure you all heard, heard about him, property.
Yeah.
Uh, he has bought Plant Number One, and Jesse Vodell, they own that. He wants to buy Plant Number Two. And, and what he said last week was that, if they don't just go ahead and bid, overbid substantially on a bid, the guy has a lot of wants to buy that, right now, that has the bid on it, and the only thing he wants to do with that, if he had a bidding on it, is scrap, tear it down, scrap, scrap the parts off, sell them off. Anzal doesn't mind a move, he can use it, I want it over, I don't want.
I want to go back there?
Yeah, the old, the old Watson plant area, too. Uh, he also wants Plant Number Four. But Plant Number Four is where all of the beams are tied up in right now, and they're gonna do a lot in their coach game with beamwork before they can get in on that. And, uh, now he would gladly come, if you guys wanna have, give him a presentation, he would gladly come to any council meeting, well, you gotta give him a call, and he'll come down and let you know what's, what he's doing, so, okay? Of course, you know, that's a mining thing, uh, but, he has no intention of draining the water out of the pits, you know?
Oh, no, I heard his partner was bringing it, that was one of the things that they would do, is pump the pit down and fix the bay by the beams.
Right, yeah.
He's, he wants, he wants to shed this stuff by train, and he's figuring the railroad is gonna fix up this, I don't know where they're gonna find all the land and put back underneath those items, but there it is, he figured he'll do that.
Well, we should probably.
Not at this time, not at this time.
Yeah, we're gonna have to.
I mean, I don't even think they're fully, everything that they're saying is fully in place for them to even make promises or.
You know, I, you know, their water didn't come up foot-wise as much as I really expected it to over winter.
Well, once again, every year it goes up lower in order of month, it's a martini glass, so three ounces goes up fast in the first round.
It was before, so.
But we should probably have a, have this kind of.
One thing that I noticed last week, out there. There is a nice little sinkhole that's opened up, up the east end of the bridge, here, we threw it last Monday and last Friday.
And it will continue as long as.
And I mean, it's just a little one right now, it's about two feet wide.
We have, Kevin?
Two feet deep.
See if it's a danger to anybody that's down there.
But, that might have to be a free group of water problems here.
All right.
All right, that's all I have, and we'll, we'll have questions.
What's that?
I just said to you.
Yeah, thank you, and then we'll have to kind of look at the sinkhole, make sure it's not a C F P issue right now, just wanna walk, walk, follow to it. All right, um, attorney, John Gimmich.
I don't have any.
Anybody have anything for John? At this time, yeah, all right. Moving on, council members, utility report, any questions about the report, it looks pretty, uh.
It's up a little bit, but we did disconnect, so we got, we were through to a lot of them, so it's back to them.
Yes, it's the envelope. I added the handicap accessibility, just to kind of bring that up again, to see if we're having any headway in anything, um, as far as grants or ideas for accessibility. I think, uh, we need to do something, or potentially move the household meetings to a different area, so people with handicaps can attend. I think, uh, we need to do something, or potentially move the council meetings to a different area, so people with handicaps can attend. So if you guys can think about that for the next council meeting, and we can put that on the agenda. Um, if you have a further discussion, I would appreciate it.
Gavin, can you look into those, um, acorn stairlifts? Just for pricing on something from what we've got for stairs? Cause I know they attach to the stairs.
I did look up the elevator, like Big Fork has.
Right.
They won't go high enough, the self-contained units don't go high enough for a building.
But I, I'm kinda interested in, I, I know they're reasonably priced, and at least it would give some access. So if you could get a price?
So basically, an elevator would be a full-fledged built structure. Yep.
And it would have to be on an old sidewalk.
On an old sidewalk, that would be the best thing.
Best scenario, but.
An old sidewalk, yeah.
Well, the, the self-contained units were really nice, and they weren't really expensive, but they don't go up high enough.
High enough, right.
Just for two floors.
Yeah, so, I think we still need to look at that, I know you're, you're checking with, uh, historical society, and if they say we can't do it, I want that in writing. Um, if we can, but.
Well, we, we can do it, there's just a lot of, a lot of work to do it.
But I think we need to do something, it's just a matter of time before, uh, this becomes a bigger issue. So, let us know if you find out, thanks Gavin. And then, for not, any further, any further on the handicap accessible, or, sorry, D, light? You want a light just then, too?
Yeah, I just would like to know how the city council is going to move the next hassle of lights issue, because it's, it's not
being addressed.
It's not being addressed, and we need to create a resolution, or a motion to make this happen, and then this.
It's my understanding that we, we made the motion, they did force light, they went out, they had forty some notices.
There was twenty-nine on that sheet.
Was it twenty-nine?
That's what it said, on the, on the report we had last month, it said twenty-nine.
Um, I think some citations were written. Just what I was told. Um, like two of them, and.
There were some, some properties in town right now that have not been mowed once this year. I mean, I understand that we did the first step, now what are we going to do to the next one?
We can direct the law enforcement officers, go up there and enforce the light. Um, I think, beyond that, it's gonna get a different step.
Have you had to an officer about specific properties, where they're at?
No. No, is that what, I mean, is, cause it's, one time I hear that we need to do this as a group, right?
You can ask questions to them.
You can ask questions.
Right, if anyone asks our officers a question pertaining to whatever, I mean, what would they put as a point?
We have to do it as a council, cause we don't have a city administrator. If we had a city administrator, we could direct the city administrator to take care of it, the city administrator could then direct the other people in the city to get stuff done. The unfortunate thing is, we're here twice a month as a group, or if we set up meetings, so are we can only do it if we do it when we're here. So if we want to have more control, we might want to have the council consider a city administrator position, or someone in the city that is dual role, and we give them the authority to do it.
You know, to them.
But, but it costs money.
In force of what, is what you're saying, or to enforce the officer to enforce light?
Right, I mean, if, if the council tells the city administrator, we want this done, and the next council meeting is not done, we have word to the city administrator.
You can also, if you feel that, well, enforcing the ordinance is the police's job, if you feel they're not doing their job, you can have the personnel, maybe, and, and tackle why is this not being done, I mean, there's, there's steps you gotta take.
But if you wanna ask some question, that's your right, you can do it as a phone call.
The, the idea has been brought up, of all this driving around and together, and um, I know that we said that that was a good and being violation.
We were told we would, no, we were told we couldn't do it, we have to, uh, well, it's good that we just wanna drive around all together and discuss what we see, but we've got that once before, and that was, uh, that was a mix, so to speak, that we weren't gonna do that, because we have a street supervisor that does it, handles that, and we have law enforcement that will be driving around and handle that as well, so.
And if you have particular properties that you wanna start listing, and they can return over to the police department and say these need to be addressed, or these should be addressed, or if we're in a council, we'll direct them.
And then we can say, group, they will be addressed.
Right. But if there are certain properties that you notice that have not been mowed, I know before, sometimes the city crew would do it. But then it'd go on their hatch walls.
There's a process for that, too.
Yeah, there's a process that has to go through for us to legally do that.
The citizens have a right to do process before we spend money.
Right. So, there's different ways, but if you have particular properties you wanna look at, then the council will direct the police officers.
So, can I just ask this, am I the only one who is noticing that there are certain properties in town that haven't been mowed anti-essential?
You're not the only one, and I have called, um, the officer on duty and said, hey, this property hasn't been mowed. And I usually get the response that, yes, we know, we are up there and talked to the homeowners, they've got part of it done, but they haven't finished it all yet, and so it's their discretion to decide if, if they give them more time to do it.
Because I'm just, I mean, over the past week, I've had probably at least thirty separate people talk to me about the light, I'm just wondering, you guys are getting that same?
Yes.
People talking to you about it, or, I just, okay, alright.
And you're always gonna have those lighted properties that never seem to get better. And so hopefully, when we do the city ordinances that we're gonna discuss after this meeting, those ordinances will be in place to where we can get it, nothing. Cause we're weak in some of the things, and I think our, our white ordinances.
I, I, and I'll say that I think that our light ordinances are, can be enforced now, before anything, before any town government.
Right, we did grass and stuff, but those light issues we're not referring to, that does not produce a fine.
Alright.
There we have it.
Who did this?
Alright.
Or unfinished business, can I?
Yeah, unfinished business. And a new business. We adjourned.
Yeah, you adjourned this.
That was all, that's all. Is there a motion to adjourn?
No motion.
Motion by Johnson, second by Eckovich. Any further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries, we are adjourned.